Hello, everyone, and I would like to welcome everyone to this special call meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court for December 18th, 2020. It should be a very short meeting. We do have some things that we need to do today that we could not take care of during the meeting we had on Tuesday. So with that being said, I would like to ask Commissioner Brian Booth if he would say the invocation for us.
Dear heavenly followers, we come before you today. The Lord watch over this meeting, dear heavenly Father, that we may conduct business in people of this county, to help them, dear heavenly Father, and go with us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Tackett?
Here.
Commissioner Booth?
Here. We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. I would like to ask Colonel Roy Downey, Assistant County Attorney, in our, I guess, most ranking, highest ranking retired military veteran, if he would lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. The first item on the agenda is the approval for the appointment of Governor Paul E. Patton to the Pikeville Pike County Airport Board. This is a city appointment that the fiscal court must concur with, and I think it doesn't really need a lot of comment, that Governor Patton is still a tremendous asset to our community. I had a meeting with him last week. I think as long as Governor Patton is able to, he is going to continue to advocate for Pike County, Kentucky. So is there a motion to concur or approve of the appointment by the City of Pikeville of Governor Paul E. Patton to the Pikeville Pike County Airport Board for a term starting December 28, 2020, and ending December 28, 2024?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Any question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the authorization to execute a grant application with the Appalachian Regional Commission in the amount of $442,105 to be used as matching funds for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Pike La Viza 202 coal-run village floodproofing project, and approval to execute all related documents. This week, we had a meeting with several representatives of the Army Corps of Engineers as well as Commissioner Dennis Keane, the Commissioner of the Department of Local Government. Commissioner Keane and I served in the legislature together, and we discussed the floodproofing project as it is on the drawing board for the La Viza Fork. The Army Corps of Engineers has spent over $1.2 billion in floodproofing in eastern Kentucky, and most of the work that's been done on the tug fork to this point, but now they're ready to move to the La Viza Fork. We have obtained money from the Bevin administration to give us the 5% match. Now, this is a 95% federally funded project with 5% funded by the sponsor, which in this case will be the county. We have been working with the, both the Bevin administration formerly and now with the Beshear administration. The Beshear, I'm sorry, the Bevin administration provided $656,000 to the county as our match to start the partnership agreement with the Corps of Engineers, and we're waiting on that to be drafted. That should be back to us any time. I'm sure that the pandemic has delayed that. But the next phase is the coal-run design completion funding. The total cost of the design is $684,000, I'm sorry, $686,842,105.26. The federal government is picking up $6.5 million of that. Our share is $342,105.26. In addition, there are 37, I'm sorry, there are 10 structures that are on the tug fork that require $100,000 as part of a $2 million total project in terms of relocations. And we talked to Commissioner Keane yesterday. He has committed to trying to help us obtain A R C funding to move forward with the coal-run flood wall. Now, I want to talk briefly about this coal-run floodproofing project. There's been some misinformation. We've had calls about people who live downstream worrying about a flood wall that may flood them. Absolutely no risk of that. That is all engineered out, but what it will do is it will protect some valuable property in the coal-run community, including the city hall, the fire department, state police post, and a lot of homes and businesses that have, that people who live every day with the risk of being flooded. That project, the flood wall, just the flood wall, and that's referred to as a structural project, the cost of that is $119 million. There are very few 119, 120 million dollar construction projects taking place anywhere in eastern Kentucky right now. Those jobs will pay federal prevailing wages. They will, these will be high-paying jobs in the construction industry. It will generate a lot of tax revenue for our local governments in terms of occupational taxes and net profit taxes, while at the same time protecting the lives and property of the people in coal run. Now, once that is completed, once that's done, the other part of it is the non-structural component, which will provide relocation for certain eligible homeowners or raising homes out of the floodplain. So the benefit to those people who are in the construction business or in the real estate industry, there's a lot of potential economic activity that will be generated here, and we are in desperate need of jobs. Now, the timeframe is that we need the $342,000 for the design in 2021. In 2022, we would need $305,800 as our match for real estate acquisitions, which totals 6.116 million in coal run in preparation for construction of the wall. So at that point in 2023, assuming that the federal government can work together across the aisle and will fund the program, and again, this program has been championed by Congressman Hal Rogers. A lot of money's been steered to eastern Kentucky through the 202 program, and this program, assuming it is funded, could potentially start in 2023. And again, there are a lot of people who are having to leave eastern Kentucky to find work. This coal-run flood wall project in and of itself could provide jobs for several years right here at home, and there will be jobs that will pay federal prevailing wages under the Davis Bacon Act. So I think it's a win-win situation. I want to thank Commissioner Keane and Governor Beshear for being attentive to this and being willing to look at it. I do plan on, after Christmas, reaching out to our legislative delegation, or at least in maybe in the January meeting, if we could ask all of our legislators to come in, because I think they need to understand how important this project is. Normally, the odd years are non-budget sessions, but because of the pandemic, keep in mind the legislature only passed a 30-day budget last year. So in January, the legislature will be in session for four days and the organizational portion of the session, and then they'll come back in February to reconvene, at which time they have to create a budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. So we're hopeful that the 202 floodproofing program for eastern Kentucky will be funded. So again, it's very important, and I think there is a significant benefit to the people in coal run in Pike County and along, it's not just Pike County, let me reiterate, there are projects that are eligible in Floyd County, Martin County, and Johnson County. And it's not just the potential for Pike County to benefit for some of the work, but there could be other projects if money is appropriated where people in eastern Kentucky can find work close to home on some of these other construction projects. So with that being said, would there be a motion to authorize the fiscal court to execute a grant application with the Appalachian Regional Commission requesting $442,105 to be used as matching funds for the U.S. Corps of Army Corps of Engineers Pike La Viza 202 coal-run village floodproofing project, and approval to execute all related documents?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is a warning of bids.
Greg couldn't be here today, so in his stead, I'll present this bid. This is bid number 40 for 2020, technology infrastructure upgrades for the Pike County Courthouse. We've received one bid from Eastern Telephonic Technologies of Pikeville. Total bid price is $198,707 even. No exceptions to the bid specs. It'd be my recommendation to award this bid to Eastern Telephonic Technologies with the lowest evaluated bid price of $198,707, and also authorization for the county judge to execute all related documents and the county treasurer to issue payment.
Before we do that, I would just like to ask if Darrell and Judge Hickman could come up. I think it's important to understand, for the public to understand, Reggie, I'm not sure if you're, you may be the one that can just explain to the public why we're having to spend this money on our technology infrastructure and where we are right now, but Darrell would be the best one to do that. Darrell, would you come on up for us?
Make sure that...
Pull your mic up real close, Darrell.
Thank you, sir. Are you ready?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
All right. So two years ago, when Deputy Judge Hickman came to me about the infrastructure here, actually, he didn't come about the infrastructure, actually...
Darrell, would you pull that closer, make sure that green line's on?
Sure.
Okay.
Go ahead. So when Deputy Judge Hickman came to me at the very beginning of the term, there was questions about how to look at the existing infrastructure that was here to accomplish some of the goals that he felt to upgrade and tweak some of the technology. And when he heard that the actual infrastructure hasn't really been touched, it's just been patched work since when Paul Patton was here and did the original remodeling, he was like, I could see the blood sort of drop from his face because he's like used to what was going on with Brock McVay, where, you know, corporate America made sure that the technology was up to date so they can keep up with the day-to-day work with the technology. And so every turn of the way that we talked about for the last two years about what can be done always hinged on the state of the existing infrastructure that is in place today. And so I gave a budget probably a couple of years ago, year and a half ago, of what it might take to do some of the various projects, including this one. And so he came to me and said, "Well, we're going to do this. Would you bid on this with us?" So we think that this is very critical to the future of the technology and the work productivity here in the courthouse. If you don't do it, especially with the state of the pandemic today showing how important it is to have good technology to allow work at home and seamless, security-based infrastructure back and forth here, that I think you'll be in trouble if you don't do it.
Well, one of my biggest concerns has been the fact that the telephone system here is very outdated and that we're having to buy parts for the telephone system from, on eBay. Is that accurate that there...
Oh, that's exactly accurate. The end of life for this particular phone system was probably 12 years ago. So technology into life means, you know, that they no longer, the manufacturer will no longer support it, and you have to find all your spare parts secondary markets.
So is it fair to say that our technology here in the courthouse is still in the bag phone era?
Close. Not quite, but close, yes.
That would be my concern is, you know, when you have, the courthouse doesn't just serve as a fiscal court. It's the county clerk, our community services office, the EPO office, Apple Red, Appalachian Research and Defense Fund, probably the most important office being the sheriff's office.
Yes.
And the 911 functions that they provide.
PVA. PVA.
The PVA, emergency management, the jail.
Yes.
I mean, there's a significant public safety need, in my opinion, and that will be the main reason I would be inclined to support this. We are lucky, as I understand it, that this will be eligible to be reimbursed under the CARES Act, and one of the reasons it's not been done before now likely is the cost that the county, and we had actually done some budgeting to try to see if we could do this, but I think now, while we can get some help from the federal government to do it, it only makes sense to do it now.
So let me go back to your point about the phone system as well. That is a great point. The phone system in place today was probably pre, very early 1990s is how long it's been since it put in. That technology has gone by the wayside, not just because of, it's just been gone by the wayside. Everything is totally different today. That's what they call a digital phone system today is, or IP-based phone systems. So the infrastructure that you have today will not support, the cabling infrastructure today will not support IP technology. So if you were to replace that phone system, you'd have to replace it with the older technology just to be able to use it inside of this building. That's another reason why, to do the new structured cabling. In addition to that, the existing phone system that you have today, if, if one of the circuit boards were to go out on it, there is a good chance it would take, if it was a major outage in the cabinet, it would take at least a week to really replace it and get your service back up and functioning. So it's a very significant worry because you really don't have any kind of redundant systems right now with the phone system.
So if we have that type of circuit failure, the sheriff, PVA, solid waste, clerk, jail, completely out of service?
Well, we would have, they would all have to fail over to a cellphone, is what would have to happen, which would make it very hard. Usually, the way Doug Tackett likes to run emergency management, they have like a bank of phones and stuff that they can manage. It would be harder to do that in the case that they don't have the phone systems.
Would there be a motion to award bid number 40-2020 for technology infrastructure upgrades in the Pike County courthouse to Eastern Telephone and Technologies for the price of $198,707 to, again, to Eastern Telephone and Technologies and to be paid for with CARES Act funds?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any other question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Hey, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I also mention that, you know, with the flood wall coming in, our office is actually in coal run and has been since 1988, and our was, our building was flooded at that time, and so we greatly appreciate the effort to try to get that flood wall in. We thank you.
We're going to try to make sure we do it.
Yep, and applaud it. So just telling you that from our business perspective, somebody that's been there for many years, we appreciate that. Every time we see the flood, the water's rising, we have a tendency to get a little nervous about it.
Well, I mean, let's just be honest, we've not had a large river, large-scale river flood since 1977. I remember that. I was seven or eight years old, seven years old, I think, when that happened, and I remember the devastation that it caused. And, you know, my parents' business was flooded in '84, and, you know, the one thing we've saw, we've seen, a few years ago, we had homes flooded in Belfry that had been there for 80 or 90 years that had never flooded before. None of us can predict when an area is going to be flooded. Winds Branch had two major flood events in 14, 15 months, and, but we are long overdue for a river flood. You know, it could happen, and I just hope and pray that we can get some substantial floodproofing done on the La Viza Fork before that happens. And we don't know, that may be tomorrow, we just don't know. So I think this court's committed to trying to move this project as fast as we can, so...
Well, I applaud the court for taking the effort on because, and the people that are surrounding me in that area also appreciate it too, and I just wanted to take this time to voice that appreciation for the effort. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Darrell, if you could hang around after the meeting, I need to chat with you as well.
I'm sorry.
If you can stay around for a few minutes after the meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
Until we go into executive session. All right. The next item on the agenda is Pike County Road Supervisor has some information for us. Mr. Little would come up. I think it's positive news.
Judge, the last meeting we had, we was talking about the bridges and the funding that we'd put in for, and I just wanted to make you guys aware that as of yesterday, we did receive the email that we was granted the emergency funding on two of the bridges.
Can you give us the numbers on that?
The, well, no, this is going to be like a 50% upfront and then the rest after the project is finished, but hold on just a second here, let me, Edgewood Lane Bridge, it looks like we would get $63,104 is the total. We would get $31,552 upfront, and then the Greasy Creek Bridge would be $47,360, and then 50% of that upfront.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know that we, we did get that yesterday.
I mean, if you go, if you look at this, the discretionary funding that we've worked on, Commissioner Tackett's worked on for the Penny Street Bridge, $350,000. What was the total on these two?
I don't have the total. Well, one was $63,104, and the other was $47,360, so, you know, we're over 100, what about around...
Is that the total, is that the total cost?
Yeah, we're better, right around, what, 150, is that right? Is that correct? Or somewhere, you know...
So we're looking between that and then the two bridges on the 80/20, being able to do five complete bridges, or somewhere around $20,000 in county tax dollars.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're going to continue to maximize looking for state and federal assistance every, in any way we can, because it's the only way we're going to be able to meet some of these needs, and I appreciate you working with Barry Davis, Transportation Cabinet.
Yeah.
Any idea when we'll be able to start on those? I know we're going to try to get, when Mr. Fanning gets back, we're going to try to get a bid pa, a bid package put out.
For the Penny Street Bridge.
On the Penny Street Bridge, because that is a big project.
It is, and these will be, you know, just when we come back after the holidays, we'll try to start, we'll start on these bridges. And just, we do have one other discretionary that is still out there. It's not been approved yet, but hopefully, hopefully it won't be long and we'll hear something on the...
Which one is that?
That's for the Blacktop. Blacktop over, we'd put in for Blacktop and Brushy.
Okay. That was for Commissioner Robertson.
Yeah. That discretionary, we've not heard back on it yet.
All right. Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Stacy, additional treasurer's business, sir.
Judge, can I get authorization for a check for, to Eastern Telephone for that bid of, bid number 40 of 2020 for the technology infrastructure upgrade in the amount of $198,707?
All right. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer to execute a check to Eastern Telephone Technologies in the amount of $198,707?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is, we do need, have a need for a brief entry into executive session to discuss pending litigation and also potential personnel, specific personnel matters and... Colonel Downey, would you please instruct the public on the relevant provisions of KRS Chapter 61 as it pertains to the entry of the fiscal court into executive session?
Okay. Under KRS 61.810, paragraph C, they can do that to propose, to discuss pending litigation, and under paragraph F to discuss personnel matters. So those are the two sections, C and F, under 68.810. If you want to get on your internet and look it up, it might be interesting reading if you're really bored today. Thank you.
It is fairly boring, yeah, I would agree. So anyway, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we will stand in recess for executive session and will return on the call of the chair. All right, we're back in session. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my recommendation to approve moving Stephen Cool from the excavator to the compactor to the landfill at the same rate of pay, and to move Keith James from road lot three to road lot four as a weed mower at the same rate of pay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is Department Supervisor's comments. We don't have a full crew here. Is, we'll pass over that. Judge Hickman, anything, sir? I am, unless you would like to do that. I'll save you a trip up here. All right. Mr. Downey, Colonel Downey, anything, sir?
No, Judge.
And then Mr. Keane is not here, County Attorney Kevin Keane is not here. He had a discovery conference today on the RCC Big Show litigation with federal magistrate judge, and is, I think he just wrapped that up, and then we'll go to Pike County Commissioner Ronnie Robertson, District One, sir.
I just want to say that I lost a good friend yesterday evening, Garfield Thacker, and I hope everybody keeps your thoughts and prayers with his family. It's right before Christmas, and during this holiday for Christmas and New Year's, I just urge everybody to try to spread out, don't get in big groups. spread out, don't get in big groups, um, because this disease is, well, you, everybody knows how deadly it is. And, uh, I sure hate we lost Garfield yesterday evening due to this. And I wish everybody else a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner, um, I'm gonna disagree with you. I'm afraid there's a lot of people that still don't believe that COVID is as deadly as it is. And there's still people that thought it, you know, it's a hoax, that thought it was gonna be over on the, after the election. And, you know, we hit an all-time high in Kentucky in deaths yesterday or the day before in terms of daily deaths. We're still getting three thousand cases a day at the state level.
I agree, Judge. People, people just, I, I don't know, you know, they're just, I don't, some people don't see it, I don't think.
And, uh, it's, it's, it's concerning because, uh, I'm gonna share with you here momentarily the, uh, the, uh, benchmarks and guidelines from the Health Department that were sent to me yesterday because, uh, uh, we are concerned about going, you know, family gatherings and, you know, nobody's saying don't gather with your family, but be smart about it because it's not worth losing one of your loved ones or getting somebody sick, um, in order to, um, you, you know, to get together. There's, you know, there's gonna be other holidays, but, uh, you know, we've had a lot of families, the total death count is up to thirty with fifteen more pending review. So we're, we're somewhere likely in the forty, uh, plus death range here in Pike County for the pandemic, so, thank you, sir. Commissioner Jason Tackett, District Two.
I just wanna thank our employees, what a great job they do. Uh, and over the holidays, I mean, think about your neighbor. I mean, you know, if you can, you could help them out, help them out. I mean, this is what Christmas is all about, you know? Uh, and like Ronnie said, uh, keep your Thacker family in your prayers. There's other families, uh, all over this county, state, United States. I mean, you know, keep all these families in your prayers because they're gonna need it. And like he said, through the holidays, I will thank, wish everybody a happy, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Tackett. District Three Commissioner, uh, Brian Booth.
I, Judge, I just wanna wish our employees and everyone in the county a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and have a safe holiday.
Thank you. Uh, just a few things to touch on. Uh, one is, um, we do need to discuss briefly the Pike County Solid Waste Department Christmas holiday schedule. All county offices will be closed on Thursday, December twenty-fourth and Friday, December twenty-fifth as official holidays. There will be no regularly scheduled garbage collection for Area Four on Thursday and Area Five on Friday. Those affected by the schedule change, convenience dumpsters will be placed in the following locations. Uh, this is the same thing that we did for the, uh, holiday for, um, Thanksgiving. Now, of course, unfortunately, uh, with Christmas, um, and, um, Christmas Eve being on Thursday and Friday, uh, those folks in that area that has their pickup on Thursday and Friday will actually have two missed pickups. Uh, convenience dumpster, dumpsters are being placed for those folks who get Thursday pickup. There will be one at the mouth of Feds Creek, uh, Row Camp near the playground, Mouth Cart Community Center, crossing the Blackberry Senior Citizens, Hatfield McCoy Park, there will be one, uh, North Johnson Bottom behind the Fire Department at Freeburn, stopover at the bottom of Widows Branch Mountain, and also at the Phelps Road Lot. Uh, in the areas with Friday pickup, convenience dumpsters will be located on, uh, at the Pond Creek Fire Department up on Penson Fort, the mouth of Mullen Fork at Stone, the amount, at the mouth of Stone on US Highway one nineteen north, at Black Jim Park at Belfry Courthouse, the mouth of New Camp Loop, at Dix Fork at the Hatfield Fire Department, and at Hardy Park. We've had some calls asking why we're not setting up convenience dumpsters, uh, throughout the county. The answer is very simple. We don't have enough dumpsters to do convenience dumpsters, uh, in these areas as well as dumpsters, um, through, throughout the rest of the county. Those into, those families, those customers who have their garbage picked up on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday will have normal service. There will not be a missed pickup at all. Uh, regular service will, uh, resume on the following Monday, and we will make every effort to pick up these dumpsters as soon as possible. Now, keep in mind, uh, we've got a total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen convenience dumpsters that are gonna be placed in, uh, those areas with Thursday and Friday pickup. We're not gonna be able, on Monday, all sixteen of those will not be cleaned up. It's not humanly possible. It will take two or three days to get all of those dumpsters cleaned up. I think, uh, after the Thanksgiving holiday, we had over half of those dumpsters, dump sites cleaned up, uh, the first day. Uh, we had individuals calling upset because they hadn't been cleaned up. Well, it's gonna take some time, but we're not just gonna pick those dumpsters up, we're gonna make sure that the locations are left clean. And we're gonna make sure that no trash is left behind. Uh, again, uh, if we had the manpower and we had the dumpsters, we would set up, uh, dumpsters throughout the county. But since those areas are not missing a pickup, um, we simply can't, uh, can't put them in those other areas. So again, if you'll go to the Pike County Solid Waste Facebook page or on Pike TV, uh, we will have the locations for the convenience dumpsters. We're trying to alleviate situations like we had where I live, uh, on, you know, Monday pickup, we missed, uh, Christmas, we missed New, uh, we missed, uh, New Year's Day, and then, uh, it was basically three weeks without a pickup. Uh, that's not gonna happen. Uh, but for those folks who have a lot of trash due to the holidays, please do not dump it illegally. Either take it to a convenience, uh, dumpster or wait till the following week. Uh, you know, our employees are entitled to spend the holidays with their families. We simply cannot expect Pike County Solid Waste employees to work on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And, um, if there are issues, if you'll call the Pike County Solid Waste Office on Monday, four-three-two-six-two-four-five, we'll be happy to provide help. Going on Facebook and making a complaint, uh, or, you know, stirring up drama is not gonna fix any kind of issues that take place. Uh, our customer service has improved in solid waste. We've got committed office staff. So again, if there are any issues, let us know. And, uh, we will have this, uh, courtesy dumpster location posted, uh, promptly. If you do have questions, Eric, the courthouse will be open on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Uh, off again Thursday and Friday, we'll reopen on Monday. Uh, we do wish everyone a very safe and joyous holiday season, Merry Christmas. And, you know, I would just ask everyone to remember what the reason for the holiday is. I think sometimes people lose sight of that. Uh, it is a joyous time of the year as we celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior. And, uh, again, I hope everyone has a safe and joyous, uh, holiday. If, uh, you do have issues, again, we'll be open Monday to Wednesday next week. And please, please, uh, take into, uh, account the precautions that have been suggested for the holiday. I'm gonna run those, run through those with you, uh, that we received. The winter holiday guidance from the Department of Public Health is to limit the size of gatherings. It is recommended to limit them to, uh, two households and a maximum of eight, of eight people. Always wear a face mask or covering, maintain social distancing of at least six feet or more, avoid large gatherings, especially those held indoors. Do not host or attend large, uh, parades or events, and avoid traveling. If you do travel, be informed of the risks involved. And, you know, those are recommendations. No one's gonna come to your house if you've got, if you, if you exceed those numbers. Uh, the Pike County Fiscal Court is not gonna send someone to your home. Uh, the Health Department's not gonna send someone to your home. Uh, you know, it's not our job to, uh, police what should be common sense. More than three hundred thousand people have died from the pandemic. A lot of people are very sick. Uh, you know, some of our members lost a, a good friend yesterday to this disease, and we've got several county employees that are either under quarantine or with COVID right now, uh, or have family members. And, you know, when I scroll through social media and I see some friends of mine who've had this disease, and they describe, you know, how horrifically sick they are. Uh, I have one friend right now whose wife had the disease several months ago, but a couple of weeks ago had to go back on steroids because the O2 saturation started to drop. You know, they refer to those people as long haulers. If you do get sick and you end up on a ventilator, uh, even assuming if you survive it, uh, what the toll that takes on somebody is just, it's hard to fathom. If you care about your loved ones, if you care about your neighbors and your friends, please, please take these, uh, recommendations to heart. We're seeing vaccines, uh, being administered throughout Kentucky now, healthcare providers and long-term care facilities. Everyone that wants this vaccine should be able to get it within a few months. I personally plan on taking it as soon as possible. Uh, Vice President Pence had it administered, I think, today and had it done in public. Uh, you know, so I think when you see, uh, your highest-ranking elected officials in the country taking the vaccine, it should tell you that they think it's safe. And, um, the end is in sight of the pandemic. When sufficient numbers have been vaccinated, the pandemic will end. We can get back to a normal life where we can go out, we can do things, we can be with our families and friends. I'm just asking you to be, be safe and cautious until that time comes. And we're, you know, this time, uh, you know, a year ago, none of us expected to be facing a pandemic. In June or July, none of us knew when a vaccine would even be on the horizon. Now we know. So please, please take this to heart. I do wanna give you an update with the numbers. Pike County has six hundred and forty-four active cases of COVID with thirty deceased. I think there was fifteen deaths that are still being reviewed. Nineteen hundred and eighteen recovered for a total of twenty-five hundred and ninety-two cases. Uh, we have hit over three hundred cases per week for two straight weeks. And, um, I'm sorry, there's sixteen active death cases pending. So it is anticipated that the Pike County death toll, uh, could be as much as forty-six deaths. Um, our, um, the numbers of, uh, ventilator, uh, for, the percentage of ventilator use and, um, the number of ICU patients has gone down fortunately, but it could very easily spike again after the holiday season. So, uh, I think those numbers in a county of a little more than fifty thousand people to have nearly twenty-six hundred cases is somewhat alarming, particularly if you look at the growth of the numbers over the last two months. Uh, you had a hundred and forty-six cases or so in September, less than two hundred cases in September, more than six hundred in, uh, I'm sorry, in August was a hundred and change. It was six hundred, uh, in October, nine hundred and fifteen in November, uh, clearly will exceed a thousand this month. So, uh, again, please take, uh, those recommendations to heart. With that being said, I'd like to ask Commissioner Booth if he would say the benediction for us, and then, uh, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Heavenly Father, as we come before you again, dear Lord, Lord, watch over souls who travel to our homes of sin, dear heavenly Father, and Lord, watch over our county and bless all those that are sick, dear heavenly Father, whether it be cancer, COVID, dear heavenly Father, until we meet again, dear heavenly Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question or discussion? See, none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes, we are adjourned.